We call the meeting to order for July 6, 2020. And I'll turn my computer around if you can all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic, and to the republic. One nation, under God.
Thank you. Tracy, if you can call a roll, please.
Mezak, Rhodes.
Here.
Saunders.
Here.
Cochi.
Here.
Sphinx.
Here.
Janutus.
Here.
Lou Hardy.
Here.
All right, Council, you have the minutes of the work session of June 1, 2020. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Sphinx, second by Vic? By Lou Hardy. Tracy, call a roll, please.
Mezak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Yes.
Cochi. Sphinx.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Thank you. And Council, you also have the minutes of the regular meeting of June 1, 2020. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Mezak, second by Sphinx? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mezak. Rhodes.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Sphinx.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Thank you. We have all business tonight, so we'll get right to the reports. And we'll start off with City Manager, Mike Mauss.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everyone, any questions or comments, you can email them to citymanager@bedfordoh.gov, And I will read those at the end of the meeting during the hearing of citizens. I wanted to touch base on a couple of construction projects taking place. First item is our road program, which has started this week. We'll be doing some work on Powers Road and some of the other streets that City Council passed with legislation earlier this year. Next week, we're going to be starting on the Forbes Road project. That's actually a county project, but that will be taking place on July 13. The Chanel demolition was, the County Land Bank moved that out to roughly July 15. We're working very closely with the land bank, Bedford City Schools, as well as the Alumni Association. But that process will be taking place again middle of the month is the tentative date. Dominion East, Ohio is nearing completion on some of the restoration work. And once that is done, the city is going to be giving them permission to begin on the next phase of their main gas line replacement. And that is going to take place along West Grace and Edgewood. So look for that information and notices to be going out. Speaking of notices, some of you may be receiving a letter from the Illuminating Company regarding smart meters. They are going through town and they're working to schedule the installation of these smart meters. This is a good thing. It's new technology that's going to be made available to our community. It'll obviously be, you know, I'm sure more detailed billing, but it also will help during power outages and it can provide a lot of detailed information to the Illuminating Company. So look for that information if you have not received it yet. I want to commend our canine officer. Our new canine finished and graduated last week. So look for them to be on the road. And again, that will be two canines that we have.
What's the new canine's name again?
I don't have the name yet.
Oh, how could you not know his name? We got a new puppy.
I had it. I wrote it down and I couldn't find it. And I don't want to.
Bedford got a new puppy. We had.
We have a new puppy. And they're going to do a great job, great job. And I'm very happy for Officer Stalark. He was going to be the canine handler. And again, they're going to do a great job. And most importantly, this is a tremendous asset to have both our canines. It's an asset for our community, for our residents, for our business owners. So if you see him, give him a thumbs up. They'll be on the road soon. Friendly reminder that August is going to be hazardous waste and computer roundup. If you go on our city website, you can see the times and the dates where you can drop that off at the service department. And then lastly, I had, I just want to mention a little ahead of it. I just want to commend Council for Saturday's neighborhood parade. I received a couple of emails today wanting to pass that on to Council. It was very well, well received, well appreciated. And I just want to say thanks, well done, well done. End of report.
Mike, just to reiterate, the electric meters, they had it done at my house already. And you don't even know they're there. They're, they're gone. They do not ring the bell, let show their ID and tell you why they're on your property. So they, they did a quick, good job.
Good, good.
Just hope my electric bill is lower next time. Law Director, John Montello.
Just briefly, guys, I just want to commend you also for the great, I heard positive things about it as well. Again, if you need me, I'm here. And just, so if anybody needs anything, don't hesitate to help out as well with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Director, Frank Gambosi.
Yes, it's coming down to the end of the tax season once again, but the extended season, I should say. Just a reminder, when submitting tax returns, we recommend to do the online system. Doing so this year, we don't require the W-2 to the 1099 forms to be sent in unless we're requesting, you're requesting a refund or we instruct you to do so because we need that for verification purposes. Don't place the tax papers or your returns in the parking lot water box. We have this really nice box that we converted our, our window at the tax department with, with their help from our carpenter, Tony Romito, did a really nice job in putting a mailbox right there. You can insert your papers through there and your tax returns and we'll process those within a day. It also helps with the social distancing. Remember, we will not have that one-on-one tax preparation service this year. So we're going to need everybody to be sending those in, the returns completed. We have it through our lockbox, which we advertise online. We also have the box inside of City Hall. And we hope that everybody will utilize those two resources which are left right now. And we do have a lot of returns that still have to come in from out there from the residents. So we'll have a big flurry coming up just before the 15th. Remember, we have to put those penalties on on July 16th for state law. So please get those in, get timely files and pay the bills that are due. And we'll, we'll be looking for your paperwork, I guess, this year, not see you. But we'll have all that in on the 15th of July. At this point, I think that's the end of our report. We do have some accumulation of some figures for our finances, but I think I'll wait till the end of July to give that report as to how we're doing because that will tell the tale where we're at, at the end of July this year. So that's the end of my report for tonight.
Thank you. Council, Mrs. Mezak.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions to the City Manager. The first one would be the corner house, and we talked about it, West Glendale and Journey, across the street from the school directly. That whole place is overgrown and I think, well, Berant was the last owner. I don't know who owns it now. I think maybe it could be a rental, but I'm not sure. But if someone can check it out from building, I would appreciate it. And also, you mentioned in your Friday write-up about U.S. bank property. Isn't the filming place back there yet?
No, I had included that in my report a couple of weeks ago. So the last few, probably about the last six months, there's been back and forth between them. We dealt with their attorney and the property owner. Ultimately, what happened is the property owner put that property up for auction and a Northeast Ohio developer acquired it. We met with them and I could say there is, there's a significant amount of interest. So we're working with them. Last couple of weeks, I put that in the updates to Council. So I would, I'm optimistic we're going to get someone, another business in there before the end of the year.
And then finally, if I'm not taking up too much time, when we get updates in regards to the coronavirus and they show the map of Ohio and everything like that, what are our personal stats for the city? You know, like 100 maybe being hospitalized or do we have, you know, figures about how many in our area?
I would, I would be reluctant to share some of that information right now. I don't, some of that's specific. Anybody that is positive deals directly with the Kyler County Board of Health on that.
Okay, only because I had a few older people ask me, you know, we don't see. And I said, well, first off, the city wouldn't do that, put up their personal information on the TV or in the public record like that. And secondly, I says, we really didn't have any.
Correct, correct. I, I was reluctant and I'm sorry. I wanted to touch on one thing and I apologize. I did have a conversation earlier today. Councilman Lou Hardy reached out and he brought up a good point. He acquired as far as the heat wave. And, you know, obviously, is there anything that we have opened similar to what we've done in the past? And what can we offer to seniors that may be in a position where they don't have air conditioning? So we have some staff members looking into further details on that, but a couple of things. One, we can't open our senior center right now based on the state guidelines. And two, I don't think it would be, I don't think it would be wise to welcome a large numbers of seniors into that area. I think a couple of things that we can tell our seniors right now. One, contact us, get us, get on our wellness checks. We're making daily wellness checks to our seniors. And we started this during the early part of the COVID-19 health crisis, and that's continuing. So anybody that wants us to check on them, if they need anything, we will respond accordingly. And, you know, I, in speaking with someone earlier today, and they hit it on the head too. This is a perfect example to, let's be neighborly. If we have a senior next to us, now is the time to check on them. Now is the time to see if they need anything. So Bedford's always been great with that. And I think it's one of, one of the positives about our town. And I think this is another example of, let's look out for our neighbors and look out for our seniors. And if there's anything else, any other cooling centers that may open up, I will share that and that information will be placed on our website and we'll put that out in social media. So I apologize for, for getting to mention that earlier. And I had indicated to Councilman Lou Hardy that I would look into that. So sorry about that.
Thank you.
Done Paula?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming. I'm glad to see, glad to see you. We had a great Fourth of July weekend, the first Friday on our, BDA, first Friday on the third went amazing. We were actually out of bags within 20 minutes, which for us is, is just, thank you for supporting us. Our next first Friday, we're hoping to have it bigger and better than ever. We're working on it. We are keen for people to help us with it. If you would like to do some volunteering in Bedford, we'd love to hear from you. Please, you know, you can email us at bda@bedforddowntown.org. Let us know, you can visit just at BedfordDowntown.org and find out more about how we can use your skills, your time, your money, to be frank, in improving our downtown area. I'm very excited to announce that we have not one, but two different new projects for our downtown area right now. We're looking at, you know, a number of exciting and amazing projects. We need your help, looking forward to it. Thank you for joining us and hopefully everybody is making it out okay out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders.
Yes, a quick note on the smart meters. When they do install them, they do shut your power off. So if you've got computer systems or something that aren't on battery backups, hopefully you're home like I was the day that they came to do our meter because we had to shut all the systems down. Because not only am I working from home, but my son's working from home too. And we're all working on computer systems. So they gave us 10 minutes to shut everything down before they pulled the meter. But it does interrupt your power, so you're going to be resetting all of your clocks too. But let's hope that these processes are running smoothly enough. But like I said, I just happened to be home today, they didn't mind. The only other thing I have is a question for Mike. We are doing the chipper service this week, aren't we? Is he there?
Yeah, they were out today, Don. Yeah, they were out.
There is an excessive amount of branches in my ward especially. It seems like everybody decided to take out all of their landscaping and we've got full tree lawns stacked four or five feet high with branches. I think that's an excessive use of our chipper service, but that's beside the point. But there are a lot of branches out there right now and hopefully we can get them all.
We'll, we'll get them all. I will say today was a little challenging. Our chipper was overheating multiple times. So, but we'll get them all. There are some areas too that, some of the branches, we're out trimming as well. So when our arborist is out trimming ahead, you know, we're placing some of that down there too, tree lawn trees and things of that nature. So we'll get to it. It is out this weekend. Just a friendly reminder, if you do have items on your tree lawn, it'll make it more, allow us to be more efficient and more effective if you call your address into the service department and we'll get out there and collect it.
No, I'm sure some of these didn't call them in, but that leads to the other one is the fact that we've gotten numerous tree lawn trees that you can't even walk under on the sidewalk anymore. Are we lifting any of those?
We are, we are.
Okay, good. Because I've gotten numerous complaints because people, now that they're home, are out walking a lot more and they keep having to dump around trees. All right, thank you.
Quickly, just so, you know, typically when you trim, the proper time to trim and lift is early spring or fall. Obviously, you can do it now. Now, this wasn't done in the early part of the year. It was when everything was taking place with the COVID-19. We were shifting duties, limiting staff being together. So it's created some challenges for us from an operation standpoint, but we are trimming that now. But just in, you know, for reference, the time we typically do that is early spring and then in the fall.
We're going to get some of those smaller dead trees on the tree lawn, like the one up by the convenient mart in Columbus, the one at Nordham and Ennis. Those, they should be able to just zap off and get rid of immediately because they're not very big.
All right, thank you. Don, when the, the first energy came and did my meter and at my mom's house, they were there and gone and power, I didn't even have to reset anything. They were so fast.
Mine, they had to, but maybe because I have, well, you might have a lot of power because you're almost all electric too, because I have 200 amps served.
Yeah.
So. Yeah.
Mrs. Sphinx.
You done, Don?
No, that's all right.
Okay.
Yeah, I hope everybody had a safe and uneventful Fourth of July. Started off the celebration on Thursday at Woodside Village, which is pretty much in my backyard. Thank you to the mayor. He made their day. They were so excited when they heard the mayor was coming to their small little parade, which went around the perimeter of Woodside Village. And also, thank you, Mike. Make sure the guys, and I think I've already said it to you, the fire department and the police department joined in on the parade and it just, some of the residents, we couldn't see them, but they could see us. So it really made their day, they were able to be a part of it. And it was just such an honor. I know things are not to the normal. This is kind of, kind of probably be our normal now with the Fourth of July. And it was our decision to cancel our normal big parade. But it was just an honor to be part of a very personal, and I thank you to each one of Council for coming together and making this so special. We had to do something. We put our heads together and thought about what we were doing. And, and, you know, you don't think about that some of the residents normally don't get to come to the big parade for some reason or other. And we brought the parade to them. And to see the smiles of the surprise or just seeing the faces that we haven't seen. I'm so used to going to the monthly meetings at the, at Allenwood for the seniors. And to see them and for them to see us in person was just, it did my heart good. And I know it did the rest of Council as well. Shortly got a few flack here and there, but you're not going to make everybody happy. But I know that we did get a lot of good response and it was good to be out there. So again, big thank you to everybody who's involved in that. Check your neighbors with the heat going to be very hot, especially animals. If you have animals, please be aware. Don't lock them in a car, lock them in a garage, or lock them in a kennel in a garage. Please be aware that those, even if they have water and food, it's, it's a lot hotter in that garage than you think it is. So be aware of that. Check on your neighbors, be, be neighborly. And Mike, again, speeding on Grant, speeding on Willard, speeding on Graincroft. And I know the rest of the city. I did personally was out in my front yard last weekend. A car comes 60 to nothing, never even attempted to stop at the stop sign. And thank goodness, one of our guys was on Kenyon and got it. And they got another one right when that one was stopped, was coming in. But they're, they're not even attempting to stop at that stop sign. And it's nowhere on Grant. It's like, it's like a speech strip. Same thing on, on Willard. And I was hoping because of some of the manholes that are kind of deep on Willard, but no, it didn't stop them. It's like, it's, it's not a suggestion. It's, it's, it's a lot, stop. And it's just, I do, I know I've been complaining about this for years and years and years, but I don't want to wait till someone, one of my residents or one of our other residents, council residents, gets hit by one of these people that have no respect for the law. The law's a law, stop. It takes 15 seconds out of your, you know, to stop. And it's just, something has to be done for it or something happens. It's getting crazy. It's just, like I said, I know I sound like a broken record, but something needs to be done. I don't want one of our kids or one of our seniors to get hit. And in the report.
Thank you. Mr. Janutus.
Yes, sir. Well, there are a lot of firecrackers this year. More than ever, I guess it's, you know, maybe the COVID has something to do with that. And people complain about it, but, you know, blowing off firecrackers is kind of an American tradition. So very difficult to eliminate that completely. But there are an extra bunch this year for some reason, we'll have to just see how that works. But the, I thought the parade was fun and that was a good idea. And I want to thank the mayor who had the great idea that after the parade was over, he said, hey, that's not good enough. We got to go put on more streets and, and, you know, and then it just went on. Everyone went on for the next 10, 15 hours. I couldn't stick with it, but that was really neat. What do you think, Heather?
I just wanted to say, there was a gentleman that joined us.
Yes, the truck, the truck.
He didn't, he didn't give us his name, but I want to thank him. I really do. And we had a few other people join us that we knew, but he was just one. He just saw us out there and came right ahead.
Yeah.
Thank you for that, whoever you were.
The only thing I got out of him was he was a Bedford graduate and I said, welcome.
He saw us doing a Fourth of July parade and he wanted to be part of it. And thank you for joining us. I don't know who you are, you dropped out before we ended, which I don't blame you because it was a long marathon. But thank you, thank you for joining us.
Yeah, we're all trying to be fun through all of this. And, you know, obviously lots imposed upon us from higher governments and everything, but we're just trying to do what we can. Very good. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Lou Hardy.
Well, one good thing about going into last year is everybody, everybody's already said everything that I was about to say. So I can't add too much more to everything. But I came up with the idea of having this parade so we can, so we had all this fun. But anyhow, after, my grandson loves being in the parade. So for me personally, to have him throw out stuff and he was able to still do that this year because he doesn't understand why we didn't do it, you know, in a way. He doesn't know what's going on. So it's kind of hard to explain to all your, your own grandkids and everybody else at a younger age, all these things that we're doing in the end. And so that's something we have to think about to make sure that we include them as much as possible. So other than that, like I said, everything's been pretty much reported. So end of report.
Thank you. And again, I don't have anything to add to that except thanks for everybody. And we did have a good time with the parade. And one thing to mention about the parade, we didn't publish the exact route because we didn't want people gathering. That's the reason we couldn't have the big parade. You can't have people gathering and social distance and all that kind of stuff. So I apologize to some of the people that, we went by their house and they kind of peeked out after we were gone by when they heard all the horns and things. So, but we did the best we could and it, and it was fun, like you said.
It was amazing. No, it was not fun. It was amazing. We did an amazing job and I don't care what anybody else in the city says.
I'll go with that. Thanks Heather.
Thank you, Heather.
All right, let's get out with the business. We don't have a big agenda, so let's get on. Ordinance number 9794-20. Ordinance providing for the adoption of new matter in the codified ordinances of Bedford to adopt and enact the May 2020 replacement pages to the codified ordinance of Bedford, Ohio. Herein after codified ordinances to repeal certain ordinances in conflict therewith or deemed obsolete and declaring an emergency. It's a big, long way to say we're just updating our ordinances. Hey, can I have a motion for suspension by Sphinx, second by Janutus? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mezak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi. Sphinx. Janutus.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion for third and final by Mezak, second by Rhodes. Who wants to take that? Tracy, our clerk deals with this. So if you want to explain just quickly what that is.
Stan, I could touch base. Basically, it's just, we're switching out as far as with the codifies. It's certain provisions within our codified ordinances that need to be amended to conform to the current state law. That's what this is in relation to.
And we do this periodically, so, okay. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mezak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi? Spinks? Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9795-20. An ordinance declaring the property and structure located at 38 Ennis Street, parcel number 811-33-009, a nuisance condemning the property and ordering action and declaring an emergency. And I have a motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Rhodes. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders? Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluh party?
And motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Fluharty. And Mike?
Thanks, Mary. Yes, during this ordinance is in regards to obviously 38 Ennis Avenue. We performed a rental inspection in August of 2019 and found a number of issues that deem the property, not only did it not pass the inspection, it's uninhabitable. The owner of the property has failed on multiple attempts to address these issues. There's currently no water supply, no electricity. There's outstanding health and safety issues with the property. This is basically our next step to try to get this cleaned up, get some attention to it, and hopefully get some things corrected.
Thank you. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks? Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9796-20. An ordinance authorizing the finance director to establish and maintain a new fund for the city of Bedford referred to as local coronavirus relief fund, special revenue fund, and declaring an emergency. A motion for suspension by Rhodes, second by second by Spinks. Call the roll, please.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes? Saunders?
Yeah.
She?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Should have had a expla- explanation on that one. Frank, you want to take that after?
The governor's office in the state of Ohio has, through the CARES Act, sent our city $381,000 to appropriate in the next ordinance. And in doing so, the state requires us to have a special fund set aside just for those funds and how we're spending those so they can track for federal purposes. We'll be under federal laws and purchasing guidelines and so on in regards to these funds and a lot of regulations of how the funds can be spent. And, and very restrictive. But at this point in time, I asked council to establish the fund. The money's in already. We have to put it into these funds. And then we'll be appropriating in the next ordinance those plus a bunch of other grants and other funds that we've been able to obtain in the next ordinance. So I ask council to look favorably on both this ordinance and the next one that we'll be reading tonight.
Thank you. Tracy, we did do both suspension and the third?
No, we didn't do third and final.
The third and final? Okay. Need a motion for, do I still need a motion? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, we still need the motion. Good. Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Janutus. Now call the roll, please.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus? Fluharty?
Thank you. It's difficult sitting here with nobody around and trying to, usually Tracy sits next to me and keeps me in line. I don't have to ask these questions. But we'll, we'll get through it and we'll we'll do the right thing. Ordinance number 9797. An ordinance amending ordinance number 9738-19, making additional appropriations for current expenditures of the city of Bedford, Ohio during the year 2020 and declaring an emergency. I have a motion for suspension, please. By Spinks, second by Mezak.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi? Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Spinks. And
I'll have nine comments in regards to this. There's quite a bit of funds that we've been receiving and a lot of activity that we have in regards to appropriating to spend those funds. The SEAL received the 2020 Recovery Ohio grant in the form of $120,000. So we'll be appropriating funds for that. We received under the Health and Human Services CARES Act Relief Fund, $11,422 towards our ambulance and the runs for COVID runs. We were able to, last year, receive funding from the Eagles. We're going to appropriate that for the police department for $5,500. We talked about in the last ordinance, the coronavirus fund relief that we just received from the federal government for $381,147. We'll be appropriating that and will now be substantiating the expenditures that were allowed in line with that to maintain the funds. There is a refund of those funds at the end of the year if we have not spent those by that time, in line with all the federal regulations, I might add. We have to add funds to the streets that we're doing improvements of $143,000. That's equal to the amount of money we're going to receive back from the county in the form of their grant towards Forbes Road and the crack ceiling that we're going to have this year in that program with the county. We have the immunity complex cameras that were going to be already installed. Many of them around the city hall that are working. We've appropriated $30,000, almost $31,000 for that. And two or three other items, wastewater fund. We had the Wood Creek trunk project that we had to repair on the one hill for $80,000. We appropriated, but we authorized the contracts for that last meeting. And in the law enforcement trust fund, we received $23,000 of confiscated funds that in the future, based on court action will determine whether or not at the city, we'll receive those funds in the law enforcement fund for police activity or whether it'll be going out to other sources that are people in law enforcement agencies that worked with us. We also received $172,258 for the SEAL and forfeited trust fund. These monies are that SEAL confiscated. Again, working with other agencies, some of those funds will be our ours will be maintaining that in our SEAL activity for all the other cities. And then the rest of the funds, perhaps will be going to other entities that we work with in line with confiscating funds as we do the cases. The cases will determine where they go. So I ask council to approve that ordinance this evening. That'll catch us up with our projects and where we're at today. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks? Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now it comes to the time for the hearing of citizens, which we will do electronically again. Mike, do we have any emails?
You're
can't, you're muted, Mike. Mike, Mike? You're muted. You're muted.
I'm pulling on my email.
There you go. You were muted.
First comment, I I'll leave the it's just a comment that I mentioned earlier. I won't mention the name and address because it is technically from a minor. But the quote is, "Thank you for bringing me a parade and for all the candy and for the sharks." So young-
For the sharks?
The sharks!
I'm not sure for that, but
Danny was giving us sharks.
So
It was a thing.
We need to save them.
Just wanted to pass that one on. The other comment, curious to know how many citations and confiscations of fireworks were made. The concern is that there've been fireworks going off for at least 12 days, including Monday, from as late as 12:45.
Lack of
I could say that. I, you know, in reading some of them, you know, our, our guys were extremely busy.
Lack of
Some of the tricky parts is having to be, needing to witness that firsthand. And when you're bouncing around from location to location makes things a little challenging. I think we were at 20 plus, 21 or 22 different streets throughout the town that we responded to. Some of them were some, some teenagers, juveniles. They did comply. The parents complied. They did clean those up. I could look into the specific numbers as far as confiscation.
I'm sure there's a plan, right? There's a plan.
They were there was a lot.
Mike, is there a plan? I'm sure there's a plan, right?
To, to address fireworks?
Yes, I'm sure there's a plan.
Yeah.
There is. Good.
I mean, our our officers-
I'm glad to hear.
Our, our officers are obviously responding. We have some people that are regulars that we spoken to and have complied. I think it's, you know, we joke, it seems that people have used their stimulus dollars on fireworks. We're not the only community.
No. Every community.
And we're responding. I would urge anybody, I will say one thing. We did have to respond. I believe it was Wally up in your ward. We have a fire. There was a small fire that FD responded to and put it out. It was a result of fireworks. So some of it, especially when it is, is this hot, it can be a safety issue. But if there's concerns, people should call, give us the specific information, specific location, and as always-
And there's a plan.
Thank you. Any, anything else?
That, that's, that's it. All the comments.
Very good. Well, I need a motion for adjournment. By Saunders, second by Rhodes. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks? Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Well, thank you all for being in here tonight and for listening in. And we'll see in August if we can get together or not. We'll see what happens by then. If we can meet in person, it would be nice, but we'll, we'll play it on the safe side. So good night and thank you to everybody.